In a similar sentiment, I very much value the equity audit. And however, I do not agree with the recommendation. In a similar sentiment, I very much value the equity audit.
Anyone else?
Well, Laura, I feel there are no comments.
Just so you know, they're still working on the live stream. They haven't set up the ones for this date. And Anna's on her way. We are live streaming it right now on the district YouTube channel, which I will share with Catherine, so she can share it out on social media.
Thanks for the update, John. Anybody else wish to comment on the selection of Equity Auditor, please?
Okay, I will say a few things. So, one of the things that struck me last night was the repeated sentiment that we've heard several times about expertise, that the committee members didn't feel they had the expertise to make such a decision. We've heard that before. It's been said in the board meetings before. And I've been thinking a lot about what that means for many of us, where we only have very little expertise. And we often have to weigh in in places where maybe we feel uncomfortable weighing in. And this is absolutely one of them for me. As a white man, taking up space in an equity conversation is uncomfortable. But as a board member, I think it's really important that I offer what I told everybody that I could offer, which is my expertise is in the area of methods and statistics. And I've taught it for a really long time. I've taught it at all levels. And the more I thought about the two presentations last night, I saw a lot of similarities between the two of them, but there is one glaring difference. And that is in the quantitative analysis. It was in the written response from both of them. In Dr. Dubiel's response, she was very clear. She uses what she calls descriptive analysis, which essentially is ruin, standard deviations, and data description. From my perspective, if you're going to make inferences to a larger population, which is exactly the goal of this, we want to understand systemic issues. We have to use something more than descriptive analysis. It's essential to me. And in order to do that, you have to use some kind of inferential analysis. Dr. Lewis did mention that in his comments. He made it perfectly clear he would use a combination of those two. In order to do that, or should he do that, he would be able to draw much more robust conclusions, in my opinion. I looked carefully at the responses that Dr. Dubiel gave in her examples. She says things like, if I saw 5% of this happening versus 8%, I would conclude that there's no equity here, or that there is equity here. And the problem is you cannot draw those conclusions from descriptive analysis. She's asked for many years' worth of data, which I think is critical. Unfortunately, with descriptive analysis, you can't do a whole lot with multiple years of data if you're not taking it to the next level. You can't determine the meaning of those trends without an inferential analysis. So, at the end of the day, I find myself thinking, how did we get to the conclusion? You know, what did the committee use to decide one is better than the other? We don't have that information. I listened to the committee members' concerns last night. They brought up concern that Dr. Lewis would not perform the focus groups himself. Yet, in his response, he very clearly said he would do that. There was a question about his thoroughness, that his timeline was too quick. But in his response, his timeline for after he performs the analysis is quick. I don't know if that's just an issue of how much time the two consultants have, what their other commitments are. So, to me, these are not, there still aren't, those don't raise an issue to me that distinguishes the two of them. Committee members talked about the fact that he's out of state. But Dr. Kathy was very helpful and let us know he's performed many audits in state. There was concerns about travel, and there's travel built into this, there's travel built into the other. So again, like other members have said tonight, this was a decision, I mean, I've really thought a lot about this, and what's the appropriate thing to do. I absolutely respect what the committee has done. I respect the fact that the majority, although not unanimously, selected Dr. Dubiel. But I find myself deeply concerned that at the end of this, we will have spent $40,000, and we have, we will have had a missed opportunity to draw the conclusions that we need to draw with the analyses that we need to do. So that's all context for my no vote tonight. But I do absolutely respect the committee and the work that they've done.
Anyone else?
May I address the board?
So, of course, Dr. Kathy.
I think, perhaps, hearing the comments from the board members who are indicating that they do not feel comfortable going with the recommendation of Dr. Dubiel, and the questions that have been raised, since some of the board members did not speak last night during the debate that the task force meeting had. But since there is a clear recommendation on behalf of the board, would it not be prudent that the Board of Education members have a direct conversation with Dr. Dubiel to address the quantitative statistics before taking up a vote to either approve or reject? You know, she did have the written responses, but I think there are some additional questions that, you know, in terms of her processes, in terms of regression statistics, and other things that may not have come out in the written responses, that I think before the board takes a final vote, she should at least be given the courtesy to address those issues, since she is the choice of, or overwhelmingly the choice of the majority of the task force.
Procedurally, the board can do, I think, one of three things. It can go ahead and vote to approve the contract to support from Dr. Dubiel. It can direct administration to seek out a contract with Dr. Lewis. Or we can defer the decision to a future date after acquiring more information. I mean, that would be the board's choices, as I see it tonight.
I'm going to chime in too. And I feel like Dr. Dubiel was not given an equitable opportunity. We knew that we were on a very tight timeline. I made it really clear in all of our emails that we, she was squeezing us in between two appointments and meetings that she already had scheduled. And 10 of her minutes were literally taken, I mean, we had enough time to ask her one question before she had to zoom out and go to her next appointment at 6 o'clock, which was really unfair. I don't know if it was intentional or what, but the fact that she had to speed through her presentation, we weren't able to ask her any of the quantitative questions that maybe, like, remember Ogowski has brought up tonight? And then it kind of impacted our interview with Dr. Lewis, because we couldn't then ask him several questions that we weren't able to ask Dr. Dubiel. So, I do feel like the process itself was tainted from the very beginning, when she was rushed through her one opportunity to talk with us again.
Can I just offer some, can I ask some clarifying questions, perhaps? So, one thing I think is worth noting is that part of why I think some of these questions, well, I know why some of these questions weren't asked publicly last night is that the goal was to encourage those who have not spoken to speak. And so, and also, somebody like me, I was not, you know, I was a listener. So, I just think that should be stated, that it wasn't because board members weren't interested in asking questions. But it was, the goal was to try to hear from voices that had not felt like they had maybe had the opportunity.
But my point was, she had enough time.
Sure, I was just trying to start, I was just starting.
Yeah, okay.
Partially to his comment about.
And frankly, had I known he would go on for 10 minutes, I wouldn't have blocked it.
Yep. So, I, sorry, I feel like I just got thrown off there. But, um, I think also, though, I guess, to even go back further in some of the process, which would help me maybe understand how we ended up with the initial one recommendation, is that my understanding was that we, you know, Dr. Kathy was, you know, kind of encouraged to come up with a list of potential auditors that were vetted, given his expertise and knowledge. We had a list of 10. And then we were presented with one. And I kind of, again, am questioning, like, that initial step? I still think sort of, maybe it was a misstep in that we didn't have the opportunity, like, were committee members then? Did committee members say we want one presented? Or was it, how did we end up with that one initial presentation versus from that list of 10? And did the committee members, as a whole, vote and say we want one presented?
No, they did not.
Okay.
So, again.
Because I know we're relying on the committee members and their
Absolutely.
diversity to sort of support the recommendation.
Yep. So, again, I think.
Start with the criteria.
Well, I'll let Dr. Kathy, I'm gonna put myself in the parking lot.
Sure. So, the way that I understood the process to be from the beginning is that I was to go out and vet different potential candidates to could conduct the equity audit. And again, I worked with several directors of diversity, equity, and inclusion that had worked with various consultants throughout the district. Once I had those conversations, we combined, vetted that list together, because other districts within the state are also looking for equity auditors. So I narrowed my initial list down to three. And based on the fact that I had a tangible report that I could secure from Dr. Dubiel, because no other auditor's information was available due to non-disclosure agreement. I spoke with, directly with districts who had worked with Dr. Dubiel. They had nothing but great things to say about her. At that point in time, I invited her to have a conversation with myself and Dr. Ivory Tatum. She was the first line of defense, as you will, that if she felt like this person could do a good job, that we would take her to the task force, and then let the task force have the opportunity to vet her additionally before bringing her to the Board of Education. And that's the process that we followed. Again, once she presented to the Board of Education, I don't think there was any initial pushback, at least not at the meeting that she presented at. I think every, all the concerns occurred post her presentation. And then after that discussion, then I invited four additional consultants to come and present. Two rejected our offer due to time constraints and other obligations they had. And the two remaining consultants who wanted to entertain working with our school district then made those presentations, one being Dr. Lewis and the other being the Equity Imperative. And so that's how we arrived at the state where we are today.
Thank you, Dr. Kathy. Does anyone else wish to weigh in on this?
I think you missed the criteria that was set in that committee of what we were looking for. This is the only piece that I
Oh, okay.
mentioned.
Did you get that? Dr. Kathy, did you hear Tori's statement?
Okay, you repeat the question.
Just the criteria, yeah, my mic's on. The criteria that the committee said in the beginning with you, that's the only piece that I didn't hear.
Yeah, I don't have it all before me, but one of the things we wanted to make sure is that the consultant had first worked with a public school district our size. We were looking for someone who had a research-based approach. So Dr. Dubiel and the other consultants were able to provide what their framework for their equity audits were provided upon. Again, we wanted someone that we could have a tangible example of their product, or at least have references from other school districts who could validate their work. Now, of course, we were looking concerned about the money aspect. Some equity consultants, their prices range from $100,000 and up, which eliminated them almost immediately, because we don't have the financial resources to invest that type of money. And so there was some additional criteria, again, that I don't have in front of me, but I could, I could push that out to the Board of Education later this evening or tomorrow.
We have that. I just wanted to mention that that was one other piece at the beginning. Was, that's kind of, we said what we were looking for, and that's what we expected him to go out and say.
I haven't seen anything up until now, because I'm still thinking things through, and I appreciate Dr. Kathy's attention and answering our questions and working hard to keep addressing our current questions. The reason why I would support maybe getting another interview is, it follows with what Dr. Ivory Tatum said, that one of the presenters didn't get much of a chance to answer questions, but also for myself. This is so serious. Like Brian said, this is something that's going to cost a lot of money. It's not the money so much to me as the seriousness of what we want to try and get from this audit, that I want to get it right. I would support bringing back whoever needs to come back to answer my questions, because I believe that being thorough and thoughtful about this is the best way we're going to land on what we land on. And I just, I don't feel comfortable taking a vote tonight, because I would like to hear their answers. I wasn't able to listen in last night. I was busy. So, I've been reading emails and trying to piece things together, but I just think that taking ourselves slowly and deliberately is the best process for this. So I'd be in support of waiting if other people would be till the next meeting that we could get together. Hopefully, scheduling would be allowed, would allow for that too.
I'd just like to make a short statement about what was recently said. So, maybe it's might sway in one way or another. But in regards to Dr. Kathy's comment that no board members made any comments at last night's meeting or asked any questions, we were directed in an email by Dr. Ivory Tatum that afternoon that we would be muted and not be able to speak. So I would have had plenty of questions to ask Dr. Dubiel to figure out whether she was legit or not, when I was not allowed to.
And that was not, how about you finish?
Well, whether that is an open meetings act issue or not, I'm just saying, I was not allowed to speak. So for anybody listening to this conversation, and here's Dr. Kathy saying, oh, no board members spoke last night at the meeting. Well, we were not allowed to speak. We were there as audience members only.
Well, so there were three board members who were also members of the committee who had the opportunity to speak last night, but chose not to in favor of trying to get opinions heard from the remaining members of the committee.
At the request of the board president.
At the request of the board president.
Yes, that's a good idea, because at the prior committee meeting, Vice President Exum spoke for 19 of the first 38 minutes of that meeting about how she thought Dr. Dubiel was the better choice.
Which, which I have a right to do as a member, and at the end of the day, I'm a parent before I'm a board member.
Yes, but earlier you said you not have expertise.
Committee meeting, and I have a right, just like any other person who was a part of that committee, to give my opinion, and that's what I did. So, whether or not, you know, it is what it is. I have that right.
All right. So, to quote a famous politician, I was speaking, so prove only then.
That's okay.
So, what I'm saying is, two nights before that, at a board meeting, you said you don't have the expertise to find an opinion, yet had no problem two days later.
I think you better go back and re-listen to what I said, because that's not a quote.
Nonetheless, what I'm trying to say here is, going into last night's meeting, I was very doubtful that Dr. Dubiel would say anything that would convince me to change my opinion. Dr. Lewis is very clearly spoken, does not use, you know, all the equity buzzwords and phrases. It's very easy to understand him. Any answer to those questions he had, anybody without training can easily understand what he's saying. To get a final report from him, I'm sure it will be much easier to adapt into our district. And as he said, he is also involved at 369 12 months afterwards to help us out any way we are able to. It is not a rigid audit, where all the defined time points and such, that's what Dr. Dubiel has. But he is going to come here, talk to everybody, figure out what we want, then do the audit, and then build a thing and evolution, so it changes and adapts to what it is he finds, and then follows up and moves forward. So, I just very much fear that if we go to Dr. Dubiel, we're going to get a result, and we might do some things with it. But it, there's potentially a lot of hidden things that will remain uncovered. So, that's why I've noted this. And I'm not sure meeting with Dr. Dubiel is, again, is going to do anything other than start this audit.
Personally, I, you know, based on, I guess, my personal preferences, like listening dollars, I have a slight preference for Dr. Lewis's team. But I also feel that Dr. Dubiel was certainly given the short shrift last night, and probably feel responsible for that personally, for not controlling the meeting as well as I could have. So, I mean, to that end, I would be in favor of even having a special meeting where we can bring them both back for one last fair interview before we make an absolute decision that night between the two of them, if the board would be willing to go with that.
I just think that we need to be as careful as we possibly can, and I don't feel that there's any, anything to gain by rushing people or things, you know? And if people are set that they don't want to support one candidate over the other, that's fine. An extra meeting won't affect that in any way, but it would definitely help answer questions for people who still have them, and make us feel more comfortable and more confident about the decision that we're about to make, because this is very serious. It's going to hopefully have long-lasting and beneficial consequences for our district, and I don't feel that rushing it is the best course of action.
I agree with you, but I also agree that when we get a board together, when the administration calls, puts it out there to get a board together, a committee, I should say, not a board, I apologize, wrong words, a committee together, I think we need to trust our administration. And we also need to let the people on that committee do the work that they're scheduled to do. And I feel like they have enough information, 26 out of 32 voted yes. So, from all the information, everything I've read, I would be willing to support what the committee has said, and Dr. Kathy.
I just want to challenge some of that thought process, because I agree committee work is incredibly important, and it's super valuable, but it has to be equitable. And I think that when we have committees that are also woven with administration and board members, I just think that's hard for certain committee members to feel free to open up sometimes. I'm not saying that's every committee member. I'm not saying, I mean, I just think that that's, it's important when we're doing the work to seek out the voices that we really want to hear from, like the qualitative groups and the focus groups we hope this equity audit provides. We want to make sure those voices feel safe and can speak freely. And I, I mean, I there can be assumptions that I'm making, you know, interpretations that are wrong, but I do think that there's a difference of the way the group works, and I could see it, because from when the Equity Group had first started to what I saw last night, I didn't quite get the same, from what I heard, the energy, the dialogue, the open comment. And I realize some of that was because there were shifts in the open meetings act, and that's what that is. But I'm just saying, like, I think we need to be really careful when we're asking committees to invest a year and do this work. They have to feel free that, like, whatever it is they're saying isn't surrounded by administration or board members.
I think we had a lot of that in the beginning, before the meetings opened up. I think that there was a little bit of intimidation, whether we want to admit it or not, from certain comments that were made in the group, and it did shift. There also was a little bit of lack of confidence that some individuals actually expressed in private, that they had of the board to even trust them. So while you had a couple of people speak up last night, you have some that are no longer even attending, because they don't believe that this board even has confidence in them to do the work of the committee. This has been drawn out, and I'm not saying that that's a horrible thing. I think that some of the things that we have done were great and should have been done. But at the end of the day, we've lost people, and we've lost some of the valuable voices that you're talking about, because they are not staff members, and they don't have to be here. And they, they pretty much said, well, hey, the board's going to do what they want to do. Quite frankly, we are. Why do I need to spend, you know, all of this time coming to committee meetings for nothing? So that's the reality of what I've heard from some of the minorities who did start with this group, who were there, who were very active, who didn't have a problem disagreeing with, because there was some disagreement. I mean, there were pieces of what we were writing out, that they were like, no, no, we're not leaving that off. No, that's not clear enough. No, we need to do better in the verbiage. So I think while you have your opinion and you have that right, you weren't in all of these meetings. Clearly, these individuals, many of them probably are not emailing you to discuss it, but I certainly have heard from the black and brown community. And they're upset to an extent. They're defeated to an extent. So, take that for what it is. For me, at the end of the day, I am trusting the person that we hired. I'm trusting the committee. I'm trusting what I have seen. I'm trusting the fact that I know that we can't sit and really compare what another district allowed to happen. They allowed that type of audit to happen. I think we hold her to the bar that we want to hold her to. What I saw, you know, Lewis is not somebody that I just totally dislike. I mean, I think the statistical system he's using is great. You know, he talked about the software that he uses. I think he will need a lot of hold handholding in a lot of other areas that are going to be difficult for our district to deal with, because that's more manpower, more work that they're putting forth than probably they need to. I heard a lot of, in both of his presentations, what the district wants, as opposed to what the data is going to give us. And it just, I don't know, pieces of that just felt like he was going to rely too heavily on the district for, okay, tell me what you want. Tell me, you know, it was too much of that, as opposed to, this is what we need, this is the data I need. Let's talk about what we're looking to bring to the district. I just felt like it was too much. I mean, just quite honestly, I listened to both of his presentations again, or his first one again, and then, of course, I listened last night. And, yeah, he's going to bring the statistics, but I feel like there's not going to be anything beyond that unless the district is prepared to provide somebody that's going to be able to handle the other pieces. So, again, everyone has their opinion. They have their right to their opinion. I'm sticking with the choice that I would have had. I'm not opposed to if the majority of the members are wanting to have another conversation. I do think we need to be, come into a decision so this work can get started. Like I said, I don't think we'll get this committee back to where it was. It's just the reality. So, you know, we are at a point now with the committee that, you know, we've lost some valuable voices that, you know, I think is, hurts us.
I do have a couple of things. I think it's important for the board to realize that while this is a board decision, there is some collateral damage that could be done if this board decides to, just to go against the recommendation of its subcommittee. These are the people that we're going to want to leverage when they go out and actually do our strategic planning, when we want to actually do the work, the actual equity work. And if they feel that their voices aren't listened to, I'm not sure, I'm concerned, I should say, that their willingness to participate in that necessary work won't be there.
And it goes beyond this committee.
Oh, I was.
I mean, the reality is, unless you have public, I mean, these are the individuals who elected us, right? I mean, and it is our job to go out and give their opinions, and I just, there's just no way that, that with 81% of this committee saying, this is who we would like to go, they had an option to abstain. I mean, and some did. They could have said.
I think the six who didn't vote are done.
Yeah.
They're not coming to meetings anymore, and they're basically.
And we already had drop off before that, so.
Okay. Okay.
Paul, you just basically said what I was gonna say. I feel like what we're doing is we're setting a precedent. Um, and it is going to be irreparable. We have now told this committee. And, and we basically based on the comments that we've said tonight, I know we're not probably gonna vote, but you are sending a really strong message to this group. I had people reach out to me after the meeting that basically said after last night's meeting, no matter what, we decide they're done.
Yeah.
Because we have, uh, one or two people who, um, have basically hijacked just one voice. Um, and, um, I worked real, I, I, I'm taking offense and I'm trying not to take this personally. We met via Zoom. Do you know how hard it is to get thirty-plus people to have honest? Thoughtful, reflective conversations in a computer screen, but guess what? We did it.
We do.
For the first several months, I worked my tail off with the people of this team to set a space where people felt. Valued, their voices were heard, and the fact that there's an implication that people can't say what they wanna say. Because I'm in the space and people can't be honest about their opinions because administrators are there is just not true. And anyone who was sitting in our meetings until we brought the vote to the board level would agree with that.
Definitely.
I don't think anyone in our spaces felt like I was twisting people's arms or I was. Guiding decisions or I, or Dr. Kathy. Dr. Kathy wasn't with us during those critical, um, connecting relationship moments at the beginning of this committee. He didn't join us until August, um, but I think the people who, for an hour and a half, once a month, twice a month. Put their, showed up in those Zooms, what we're doing to them is a huge slap in the face. So several of the teachers who are part of the committee don't come anymore, um, six of them didn't even vote. And a couple of them reached out to me last night and said, if this work doesn't move forward, they're done. And so what we're basically saying is we're, again, you heard from a couple of people last night who said they don't have the expertise. There are a lot of people in that space who do have the expertise to make that decision. Because they have been living it and walking it and breathing it every single day. And the reason they didn't talk last night is because they already chose who they wanted and they already felt comfortable with Dr. Dubio. So unless the board is gonna be doing the equity audit, it's gonna be really hard now to reengage this group. To get them to come around and rally around this process. Because you're basically saying this is who you would like us to work with and telling us as a group. You're, you're basically choosing the person that we will be spending hours and hours and hours and hours and hours of our time with. So we can bring you back a finished product at the end. So I just want you to be really careful and thoughtful about the implications of the decision that we're making. I think Paul said it very well. Um, and again, Dr. Kathy and I will do whatever we are charged to do by the Board of Education because that's our job and we will do that. And we will do our very best to repair the harm that is being caused to this group right now, and that, that basically, I'm just calling it what it is. To the group, this is irreparable and hopefully we will be able to. Go back to some of the people who have said, I had a conversation with someone today for about thirty minutes. She said, I'm, I'm done. She texted me at the end and said, I'm done. So now I have to go back to a few of those people and say, we need you and to be part of this process. So that's all I have to say.
Well, there's certainly a few that I just, I, I'm not gonna even go and get back, so you might have better success with some of yours, but. Some of the minorities that were there at the beginning are definitely not interested. Because, you know, from their terms, our white-driven board does what they wanna do anyway.
May I ask an honest question, please? Um, so I, I do want to acknowledge that the work done. Early on, everything we're talking about from the policy side of things, all of the work, and that was, at that time, I was a parent member. As you described, it was incredibly engaging work, people were participating. The board sounded very engaged and appreciative of all of that work. That committee recommended an external audit versus an internal audit, I remember that process happening. And it does feel like at the moment we ask them to decide on a person. Perhaps is when the train went off the rails and maybe that's what we're talking about here. But perhaps that was a misstep by us, I don't know the answer, but is that accurate? That, or do they feel like the entire work that was done that we've second guessed all the, all, all along? Or is it just the person we're selecting?
I think you stopped coming at the time that we set the criteria for him to go out and find a person. That's what happened. We, we talked about some, a few, I wanna say it was maybe five or six things, criteria that. Things that we wanna see in an auditor and we sent, sent him off to go find that person. I think there probably was maybe some added pressure on that, you know, the recommendation came back and then the citizen statement started. And then that kind of, you know, derailed in people's minds.
Yes, well.
What, what am I doing? You know, it's, it's a disruption, so now you're coming, you're coming and you're listening to. And, and this is no attack to those individuals, they have a right to speak, they have a right to have their opinion, they have a right to write it and for it to be read. But people got tired of it, you know, every meeting we're having, you know, these things, so, so, you know, we charged him to go. Find a person, now we're back at, no, we're going backwards. I think that was okay for some members. For some others, it disrupted the process, it prolonged the process, it got to the point where there was a feeling that. What we did, what we suggested was not good enough for the board. And so now the board has stepped in and the board's gonna make their decision and why do I need to spend? An hour and a half, three hours a month continuing this process that's now looking the same almost every meeting. So to then make a recommendation that I don't think the board's gonna accept anyway.
It's a song, it felt like, here we go again, whenever we're talking about equity. Um, it, this is what happens when you're talking about race, you're talking about these issues, there are disruptors who come forward. And, and that is basically what happened, Brian, the whole process was disrupted. Um, and it did change the tone of basically our meetings, um, and. It, it really did, and, and I wanna be clear, when Tori said you stopped coming, it was because all the OMA stuff happened.
Right.
And you, we had three board members and you were the alternate there for a little bit, and then once we started noticing the meetings, then. You know, Brian was able to start joining us again because they were public meetings at that point, but I think, um, yeah, that, that disruption. Was again, what is really classic, you know, when you're, when you're talking about, uh, racial equity work. When people are uncomfortable now, again, um, it wasn't from within the committee. I just wanna be clear, all that disruption and all that outside noise was coming from the outside, but it did impact the, the committee moving forward.
So can I ask, um, Jennifer, if, if we do have Dr. Dubio come back, would it have to be in the capacity of another committee meeting? Or would she be able to come back? Cause you, you made a good point of saying if she was rushed for time, that's not fair to whichever candidate is, if they don't get a full, a full amount of time. To answer the questions.
Sure.
Um, would she be able to come back and talk to just the board or how, how would we work it?
I think if she'd be willing to, if she's willing to come back and meet with us one more time, I, I, I would be surprised. And, and at this point, I don't know that it's gonna change anybody's opinion here at this table, so, you know, instead of us, um. I, I don't know.
I'm not prepared to tell anybody which way I'm leaning because I really do want to have some more questions answered and I don't wanna derail anything and. That's why I'm asking, I think it's a good idea to, to get, get, give her the opportunity to answer more questions, to be honest with you, when she first came to us. It was so long ago, in my mind, I felt like I didn't have puzzle pieces arranged properly to figure out where in the process. I mean, not to say I wasn't trusting you guys and what you're doing, it's like, oh, now I get it, you know, and so I've heard the other present, presenters. And if she has more information, because I did submit questions to Dr. Kathy that I was reading, rereading, but she clearly didn't get as much of a ti- chance to. Speak them out as she did to write them down, so you know, to me, that's all helpful information.
Or to bring her back, we will definitely engage.
So from my, from my vantage point, uh, I think that the work of the Equity Task Force has been completed in terms of making a recommendation. When there were concerns about the initial, um, consultant being brought forward and the board wanting to hear from additional candidates. We completed that task, we've, uh, vetted them with additional questions and a recommendation has been made. So at this point in time, I think that the, um, next meeting with Dr. Dubio should be with the board in whatever capacity, whether that's a. Open meeting or whatever the case may be, but I think that the work of the committee, I don't think that we should need to call the Equity Task Force back. And have another meeting with her, I think the meeting should be with the Board of Education.
I, 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 I think everybody agrees with that, Dr. Kathy, I mean, from, from the looks of things, I don't think we have four solid votes for, for, for Dr. Dubio tonight. Well, just, um, it's cause Anne doesn't seem like she's ready to vote for Dr. Dubio quite yet. Uh, frankly, I have a personal preference for Dr. Lewis, but I'm more concerned about the collateral damage to the people we need. To have enthusiasm for the work and my, my, my preference isn't strong enough to overlay that, um, I'd be willing to vote for Dr. Dubio tonight, but.
Absolutely, that's part of the reason why I wanna go back to it, because I do trust our committees and I know how hard they work and I know that they. It is so unfortunate that anybody on any committee feels like their voice isn't heard, I don't want that to happen, I wanna do due diligence, but I also wanna trust. Or else why do we have them? And why do we ask them to take time off of their days, you know?
This makes me go back to when we were redrawing, we were attempting to redraw attendance boundaries for elementary schools and we had a committee. That met monthly, at least monthly, it was probably twice a month for eighteen months. Eighteen months of research and drawing where, should we draw the lines to change where kids go to school, because our, our, we're all at a balance. They came up with a few maps, then turning two maps around to the board and what did the board do? Cave the political pressure and moved a total of nine students. I have never been more ashamed of what this board did, uh, except for that wasted all those people's time for eighteen months. And I really don't wanna repeat that again.
I'm glad I wasn't there for it, but I completely agree with your opinion about that because then that's, all those people feel insulted for the time that they spent and. Why did we ask them in the first place? And I, I do think that we had a great group of people on the task force from the get-go, so I just, you know. One more meeting won't hurt me at all and I'm sure it'll enlighten me on a lot of things, and, and if, you know. Don't read that the wrong way, it's just me being slow and deliberate about my decisions and I want to, I wanna weigh everything just the way you said. I, I wanna trust everybody's opinions.
I'd like to know how come people think that people on the committee were not able to speak, that's what I would like to know.
I mean, I would advise going back and watching last night's being, there were, there were an awful lot of awkward pauses, people, people weren't speaking up. I would, I was assuring them that, please, if there's who wanna hear you, it's a safe space to talk, and people eventually did. But there were also a lot of, a lot of pauses.
And I, I think the statement that we allowed to happen at the very beginning impacted that, I honestly do. The, the, uh, committee member who spoke and, um, you know, people were excited to, again, the committee wanted to see Dr. Dubio. Basically based on what Anne just said, there were a couple at our last meeting, um, in February who said, you know, it's been so long since we've heard from her. Since October-ish, um, who wanted to come back and then we started the meeting with negativity, basically. And I, I think it just impacted that unfortunately, that's my opinion.
I'm worried about a couple of things here. We don't really know her schedule except she's busy, she's already came to us several times or tried to, and the other thing is. Like Paul said, this is not looking good when we try to go and draw other committees together. A committee should be a safe place, there's administrators on every committee. From this district, because they lead the charge, there's board members, there's community members, there's parents, teachers. We all want their opinions, but I believe this work needs to get started.
Okay.
I think we should reiterate that there were a lot more parents involved in the beginning, I mean, I just. I think that's important to be said, that, you know, when you come in at the end after people have left and say, there's no parents here.
I, I'm not, I know this is an important topic and we need to, we need to keep discussing, but you also have to mind though that we have a long agenda tonight. We have a long way to go yet, so I, I, to, to kind of. Just to a point where we can, we can move on, I think our choices here tonight are either to approve Dr. Dubio's contract, I don't think we have four votes. Anne, are you willing to vote for Dr. Dubio tonight? Okay, so that's off the table. I don't think that we're voting for Dr. Lewis either to direct administration to go and seek a contract for Dr. Lewis. Cause I think for the same reason, you're not willing to. Or go down one way or the other, right? Okay. So this means that our only option left to us is to defer the decision to another date and, and try to schedule our time to bring, I think both, to be fair, both Dr. Lewis. And Dr. Dubio in for one last interview with the board. And I think, uh, to be, to expediate it, we can't tie it to our current meeting schedule, I think we're gonna have to get. A list of dates that will work for either of them and to hold a special meeting. And so, so board members, please be willing to look at your own calendars to be able to attend that meeting. Do you have an agreement? People, okay, I think, I think the administration has directed.
I was gonna say just add that, potentially we should have that, or the possibility of two different nights, because it seemed like. Really hard to get them both on the same night, you know what I'm saying?
Sure, sure, it's, it's.
Be open to that as well.
Sure, yeah, if, if it's, that's a good idea, if, if we can't get it the same night, I think maybe two different nights, but. Um, I don't, we can't tie ourselves to the first and third Tuesday and have this done in any sort of expedient manner.
No, and if, I mean, I understand if it, it has to be during the day as well, I don't know if, if that's something that's a big issue, you know, as long as I know a few days in advance. I can definitely make room in my calendar, I'm one of those asking it, so I need to be prepared to, to come when they're ready to come.
Yeah, okay, and I think to be fair, we should also make sure we're asking the same questions of both individuals. Anybody else wanna, wanna comment on, on how, on the process going forward? Thank you, Dr. Kathy, and thank you, committee, I, I wanna thank you, I mean, I was part of it, but, um. The, the work that, that the committee has done in, in coming up with our, with our, uh, mission statement and. And probably, sorry, your policy and, and the work in, in helping us, uh, go through the requirements for selecting an auditor and how, and, and vetting them and all that. Is greatly appreciated by this board, um, and we, we, we certainly do value, I, I hope you don't, don't ever discount that.
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity to, to address the board.
Uh, moving on to ten point two, uh, discussion on the Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center facility.
Okay, so I am gonna just provide a little intro and background and you, the board has a memo in front of them that, um. Our new CFO, Katie Rowland, put together for you on our behalf. Um, we initially were going to have an exec session, which we, um, I mentioned at the beginning, no longer need because we. Uh, had another conversation with the Park District, they are also meeting tonight, um, and having the exact same session, uh, discussion. Um, at their current board meeting right now, actually, so, um, as we shared last year and maybe earlier. Um, we are right now, um, asking to extend the, um. Urbana Indoor Aquatic Center Agreement, so pre-COVID, we were in a multi-year agreement, but, um, of course, the impact of COVID. Has, uh, greatly, um, exacerbated some of the, uh, financial contributions. On both the school district side and the park district side, so our most recent conversations as we were entering into our. Discussions about whether we were gonna go into a multi-year agreement or a one-year agreement, we decided, um, we were just gonna extend the year. Um, the current agreement for a year, um, because we just don't have good data, um, people have kind of. Not been coming to the pool, the pool's been closed, the hours have been, um, you know, kind of unstable and unsure. And they're dealing with the same, um, hiring issues that we are having with lifeguards and such. So we thought we needed at least one more year to really look at the data, look at the budget, look at the numbers. Um, before we entered into a multi-year agreement. Then, and in the last few weeks, uh, we've had more conversations about, um, the contribution. On both the district side and the park district side, um, new board members may not realize this, but our contribution to operate the pool. Um, is, has been upwards of two hundred thousand dollars a year. Um, same for the park district, we are in a fifty-fifty agreement, so we most. So we most recently have been talking about what are some ways that we could reduce the contribution, um, and have some savings. Um, so we've been talking about closing the pool, um, for certain time periods. Our most recent conversations have been looking at, um, while the outdoor pool is open, we, do we really need the indoor pool in the summertime? Is that a space where we can have, you know, see some savings and kind of lessen the contributions, um, for both districts? Um, so the numbers you have before you now are, um, looking at closing the indoor pool while the outdoor pool is open during June, July, August, and on Sundays. Um, the pool is usually open on Sundays from two to five. Uh, but what we've seen the last couple of years is we have very few, um, paying people, you know, people paying to come and swim during those time periods. So, um, that is basically our discussion tonight. Um, the agreement does expire in April, and so we would need to be bringing something back to the board, um, in terms of extending that contract. I know there are discussions about the future of, uh, what we're going to do after this year and, um, after, over the next few months. So we'll probably be coming back and having another conversation about that soon. So I'm turning over to Katie.
Thanks. Um, just to walk you through the options that the Park District prepared for you. Um, just because they can be a little bit confusing. So I want to make sure that, uh, what you're seeing is understood. Option one is our, is the full schedule at the pool. So this is if we do nothing. This is how much the contributions for each district will cost, which, um, is about 80,000 more than what we have budgeted right now for FY22. Uh, we, we budgeted 180,892 for FY22. So we'd be looking at a contribution in FY23 of two, 263,000 each, um, just to keep the pool open. And that's after the earned revenues that they also earn from memberships and daily admissions. This is just to offset the deficit that that, uh, pool has. Um, option two then, and all the options to the right are progressive reductions in service to try to get some of those operating costs down. Um, so option two is closing just for the summer, like Dr. Tatum, Ivory Tatum said, um, to during the time that the outdoor pools open. And then also staying closed on Sundays for the whole rest of the year as well. Um, and then option three would be also not having any public swim times. So we would maintain all of our, uh, public programming, which would include our PE classes that the school district does, uh, UPD programs and lap swim times, but no public swim times. And then again, to progressively, um, reduce service even further in option four, we would also eliminate PE classes. So option five is kind of the other extreme, which would be not renewing the agreement and not having an operating partner for the facility. And, um, this is just a base, um, a base guess of, uh, our best estimate. I mean, we've never had to do that before. We've always had the Park District as a partner. Um, and this is based on current usage, you know, levels of service that the pool's currently operating at. So I actually think we might be able to get it down a little bit more than that 186. You know, that's basically taking all the salaries out that we're paying towards that facility and, you know, keeping all the utilities and, um, uh, equipment and, um, services up at the same levels that they are now. Which, you know, if we're only supporting the high school swim team, you know, we, we potentially could have a lot of savings if we drain the pool besides August through February. So, um, I just think that was just kind of a conservative estimate of what we thought a baseline might be. Because we also don't know, you know, what level of service that pool is going to take to maintain from, um, a maintenance perspective, you know, if the Park District's not operating it. So there's just a lot of unknowns with that option five. But, um, you know, I think the goal, whatever happens if we do a one-year renewal, we don't necessarily need to change any of the language of that agreement. Um, just because the agreement doesn't necessarily dictate the opening and closing hours of the facility. It just is really more of a baseline agreement that says we split the deficit 50-50. Um, but I think that we wanted the board's input and eyes on these options because we're seriously considering options one through, well, two through four at this point. So, um, we'd like your feedback on any of those options. And I, Carol might want to say something, or hopefully I explained the options clearly. I'm not sure if it came through quite as clear on the diagram.
Board members, any questions?
Did we say that the classes would be eliminated in both four and five?
PE classes?
Yeah.
PE classes are eliminated in four and five is undetermined, but I, I think the answer is yes. I think five is just swim team only. Well, I mean, it's just school district use only. And whatever we decide to leverage for what that means is up to us. But, you know, all costs are on us at that point with no partner. So, um, we didn't really talk any further about which, you know, school district services those are or not. But the problem with having other classes besides swim team in is that now you're talking lifeguards. Now you're talking, um, you know, actual staffing of the facility in order to facilitate those classes. Because right now the Park District's operating those classes.
Oh.
Did you have any ideas, you said, for number five? We would also be looking for somebody to help us maintain then the pool? Or is that something the district could also be, like, that's included in this cost that? I don't know that Randy and team would also be adding that to the facility and maintenance.
We would be incorporating that into what we're already doing, not paying somebody else to do it. Yes.
Yeah, we have a guy on staff that's somewhat familiar with the process, but I hope to have some training.
And right now, I just want to be clear, the Park District is talking with their board about, um, closing for the summer, June, July, August, and closed on Sunday. And then, you know, possibly, uh, two, three, and four, with option five coming back, um, to the table at some point very soon, but.
I have a quick question. What, uh, I'm trying to read the options and why option three looks like it's got fewer, um, it's got fewer amenities for the public, but yet it's costing almost $4,000 more than option two. But option two seems like it has more, there's more, more going on. Is that a typo or did I read that wrong?
These were the options that they presented to us. So, um, this was the pool, the aquatics manager. I mean, I guess I'm not really sure, um, why that is, but we can certainly ask and bring that information back.
Uh, what I'm trying to do with three and four is PE.
No, no, no. Two and three.
Oh, two and three, I'm sorry.
Because it's 215 for two, which seems like it has more amenities. And yet option three costs more, but with fewer amenities. So that's why I'm.
It's the cost to pay the lifeguard.
Oh, it's the lifeguard.
For the swim classes. We have a certain number of lifeguards on deck when.
Yeah, that's a piece.
That would be.
There's no public.
There's no public.
Which probably brings in a little bit of income.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
For option two?
Yeah. So for option two, when you have public swim, you have daily admission revenues that are coming in to help offset the, the, um, expenses. So that's probably why that's why it costs less.
But it's only on Sundays that that would be shut down in option two?
No, it, well, in option two, correct. But in option three, you'd be getting rid of the, um, public swim times for, for the whole rest of the year.
But now public swim time is defined as just when it's open for anybody who wants to walk in and pay a fee. But that doesn't include like birthday parties or registered swim classes that the Park District calls and things like that. Okay. I want to make sure I got that clear.
Yeah, those would, those kinds of things, like the swim lessons and the birthday parties are encompassed in what they're calling UPD programs. So those things would still happen in options two, three, and four.
Well, and one, all of the options still have UPD programs. It's, I mean, it's going to have to be a painful decision, but it would be, it'd be really great to hear from the Park District, uh, what numbers are like right now. You know, I mean, like, eh, eh, how far down in enrollment are they for classes? And, and I know that it has been hard, uh, during the pandemic, and even a little bit before, to get the lifeguards in and to keep them. And so, you know, just to get some kind of background on that for, for us so that we can.
Yeah, before I, um, before I moved over to the school district, I prepared a five-year participation numbers, um, schedule for review of the management team. And, um, yeah, there's definitely, well, sorry, too loud. Um, there was definitely a lot of drops in participation, um, just for the COVID year, the year 2020, 2021, because they were shut down for, I don't know, nine out of the 12 months of the year. And even when they were open, it was like reduced capacity limits and, and a lot of stuff. So it looks like on average, the visits, um, for registered participation, um, are around 18,000 a year, but they were only 5,000 in 2021. And then memberships are around between 10 and 12,000, but they were only 2,000, 2,200 in 2021. Um, wait, could you repeat those? Let's, so 18,000 was pre-COVID. Yep. Uh, so 18,000 average for the years FY17 through 20? I don't know. It kind of started dropping then. And then, uh, only 5,000 in fiscal year 2021. For, those were for registered programs that the Park District was doing. So there's different categories in this work that I work with. And then for memberships, it was around 10 to 12,000 a year for those four years. And then it went down to 2,000, 2,200. Um, and then, uh, for USD programs, it looks like the visits have been around, I don't know, 9,000 to 10,000 per year. But then they were only less, less than 2,000 in 2021. So, but you know, it was really shut down. But other than that, it's been fairly stable, but it seems to have dropped over, oh, that's bad. Daily, daily admissions is really bad. It was around 15,000 to 17,000. It's only 1,000 in the COVID year. So, um, yeah, so that COVID year was, was, was bad, but our, our loss was less that year too. I mean, we only had 120,000 or 180,000 loss in the COVID year instead of our usuals, like almost 250.
But again, that's because, that's because we were closed. And when you're closed, you don't have the staff there. So you're saving money on all the salaries, you know?
But it gave us a good idea of what a baseline might look like. Just to keep the water in the pool.
And to be clear, I just want to say the part, oh, go ahead, Robbie. I was going to add, can I add one thing before you, because I think this is relevant? That the, um, Park District came to us with these options and, and they, they are wanting us to explore this, um, more so, I mean, it's become a financial, um, concern. Um, as you know, they are investing a lot of money and a lot of their fundraising efforts into the new health and wellness center. Um, and I think this is an early conversation of them maybe shifting some of their programming more so to the health and wellness center. Um, just money-wise, I don't know that they can continue to sustain the, us too. 260,000 dollars is a lot of money, um, but sustain the same level of contribution that they have to operate the pool once the health and wellness center is open. So I just wanted to add that as part of the reason why I think the Park District is, is coming to us to say, let's try this for the next few months. See how much we are able to recoup in savings. Um, it with the pool, I mean, when we close it, it will be drained. It will be literally no activity. Um, utilities will save in all those areas. So I think they're wanting to see what those savings might be, um, and then talk about what next steps would be. So. Okay, Rob, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, would this say one year, you know, time or?
Yeah, that's what the Park District's interested in.
I was going to say before your last comment is, you know, like, as numbers are down, you know, like I haven't been to Urbana Aquatics Center for many years probably. So I used to go all the time. We were like two blocks away. But, you know, numbers will go back up once, uh, we're all back in the post-pandemic world. Uh, but, uh, you know, by witness, you know, massive facility they're building in Brooklyn's, you know, maybe a lot of the public may go there instead from the side of town. So that's something to consider too. But if it's only a year, you know, that means it's not a, like a five-year plan. So that's what makes it a little easier, I think.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Are, are PE classes using them, doing this right now? Or is it?
Yes.
Only the middle school. Yeah. I mean, I've been third grade swim anymore. We stopped that years and years ago. Okay.
I mean, I personally like to, to see us try the method of closing over the summer, closing on Sundays, but continuing with our, um, PE programs. And I think it is important that, you know, our kids learn to swim. And what better place to do that than in the safe space of school? Um, I think that's something that, you know, that's a piece of why we are invested in this, uh, facility. So that's very important. Um, you know, the numbers may go back up like Robbie's saying. I think that's possible. I also think that with the new facility, that's going to really hurt us. But I think that we should revisit that, that reality at that time. And, uh.
We'll, we'll have a year to contingency plan and.
Right. So that, that would be, you know, just kind of looking at this and I, I looked at it over the weekend and listening tonight. I, I think that, uh, that we should keep the PE piece. And it looks like, you know, it's only a difference of 12,000 or so dollars, something like that, from the number, uh, four option. Um, and then the number two is a little bit less than the number three. It does give that, that opportunity for the public to still have, you know, some visits if they want. I mean, if that were higher on the number two and without the public, then I'd say, I'm not as concerned with the public piece. But since the public piece brings it down a little bit, why not? Uh, but I definitely want to support the, the PE piece for as long as we can. So I would be in agreement of another year with the number two option.
And I think if we want to have any hope of retaining the Park District as a partner going forward past this next year, right? We're going to have to attempt to have the public swim piece and hopefully the numbers will bounce back. You know, if that's all true, and, oh, yeah, maybe, um, we'll see an extension past the one year. But I think we need to be careful and, and, and plan for eventuality where, uh, we're not partnering with the Park District on the facility. Any other, any questions or comments? So, um, did the board members have a preference between, uh, these numbered, uh, is there, is there clear consensus here that we can get back to Park District?
I think using the facility for students and keeping PE classes and draining it in the summer times when there's other pool options for the majority of the public. See what happens. I mean, yeah.
Agreed. And, uh, when I think of teaching our kids to swim, we have this great swim program. And when we start losing those kids, you know, what downstream consequences will we have for our, our swim program? And, you know, our high school team and all that. It, I mean, that part's heartbreaking a little bit, but I'm with you. Let's do what we can now and see what happens.
So you're talking, you guys are both voting for option three? Is that what you're saying? Two? Yeah, that's what I was going to say, because I, I'm in support of option two as well. I, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, Brian, because I really would love to grow kids from youth up to be interested and, and keep, and definitely keep the PE piece. Um, just because that's how they get exposed to being on swim team and, and physical activity. So I really hope it works. But one year is a good, nothing longer than a year before. We have to make a firm decision.
In the Park District, I think, I think this is, is, uh, very comfortable with the one-year contract. Uh, so I think it says that the board is, is option two? Robbie?
Yes. Okay. Is the Park District back here or just like whichever one you want?
No, just discussing it tonight too.
Yeah, they're talking about it.
So I mean, we could say two and then you're like, no, guys, we want.
No, I mean, as Katie said, that it, it makes absolutely no difference in terms of the language of the contract. And it's written in such a way that they could offer any one of these options without having to change the verbiage in the contract. But, uh, when they actually go to do the planning and print their, their, their booklets and all that stuff, um, this is feedback they'll take. All right. Thank you, everybody. Uh, our next item is our sub-district boundary discussion.
Okay. So Mr. Bootsman is leading this one all on his own.
Yeah, and you may not remember everything we talked about from back on November 2nd. So I was going to give you guys a short, uh, last time on, uh, school board district, we, uh, districting. Uh, so, uh, if you recall, we went over the, uh, criteria for the board districts. Uh, we discussed, uh, the substantial equal and proportion, how in the last census, primarily because of undercounting of college students, uh, the members for the board districts are, uh, kind of out of whack and that we need to, uh, rebalance the districts to, uh, bring them more into alignment, uh, and make the members more equal. Uh, we talked about some of the worries with the continuous territory, uh, some of the various, uh, measures of compactness. Uh, and then we talked about maintaining the minority balance. We went over the current minority balance of the district, how things have been redistricted in the past and how at this point we only have one minority, uh, district, uh, one minority sub-district in the district. And that was something that, uh, in the discussion, everybody agreed was something that we were really interested in rectifying. Uh, we talked about the minimal disruption to the current board districts and how, uh, the board, uh, was willing to. uh was willing to forgo that in uh in an effort to make things more equitable in the district and to kind of achieve these other goals. Uh, and then we talked about the equitable distribution of university students and the special university area, and then also about uh balancing the school districts with the school attendance boundaries. Uh, so keeping that in mind, uh I will start into going over the district plans and.
Okay. Katie, can you start? Fight more forward as much as you can, yeah.
So I think I had the current district boundaries up here, I think it's gone now. Uh, so there were uh seven submissions from uh seven uh map submissions from outside. Uh, we uh had two info sessions over the past few months, uh hoping to get some community involvement. Uh, the outpouring of community interest was less than we would have hoped. Uh, but we did get some submissions from board members, uh and I have put those into a summary document that I sent you earlier, which I also pulled up, and I apologize with some of the things that were happening with the online streaming, all of my tabs got uh out of order, but uh so there were seven maps or five maps submitted by board members, and then two maps that were developed. Uh, as I mentioned, algorithmically, uh through the data that we got from GIS internally. So this is a summary of all of those, the range indicates uh the difference between the largest sub-district and the smallest sub-district. Uh, the existing map, the range was twelve hundred and twenty-six. Uh, and each, on average, each district should be around sixty-seven, fifty. Uh, so twelve hundred and twenty-six is almost thirty percent, a little less than thirty percent of that. Uh, the standard deviations listed there, uh just for your knowledge. And then the number of majority-minority districts was the easy measure that they used in the redistricting tour uh to be able to tell and make sure that you weren't diluting minority voting power in the uh, in the final uh map submission. So if there's more majority-minority districts, then that, if that was representative of your district, which in almost every case it is, uh as again I outlined at the November fourth meeting, uh, that is going to be uh better representing uh your district population, and it's going to uh not disenfranchise uh voters in the district as they're going to vote. Uh, the compactness score is there, or let's say, this is the simple compactness from the uh tour, as I mentioned also at the last meeting. If we do pick two or three of these that we'd like uh additional analysis from uh RPC, uh GIS, uh we can submit those to them, and they will get us the uh full analysis similar to what we went over last time with the existing district map. So with that in mind, I'm gonna start through the maps that we have, yeah.
For the compactness, what is, you know, you kind of said what that means to me guess a little bit, but what does that mean?
Oh, if you want the.
Or higher compactness, do you even want compactness with?
The higher number, the higher number is better for compactness. Uh, this is just a score, this is kind of a generic score in the tour between zero and a hundred. So higher is better for the compactness, it is not. Do you want me to go back through all the measures of compactness with the map that I had?
No, I just wondered, like, I mean, we have these numbers for each one, so it's like, well, is forty-five good, or is seventy-two?
So a hundred.
Middle number good.
A hundred, a hundred is good, uh, zero is bad. Uh, but this is not using all of the things that we would get the additional analysis uh that from the outside group. Uh, but we can't also, they said very kindly, I think, that they would help us with uh two to three uh for some like additional uh fee from our uh commitment with them. But I don't think they wanted to do six or seven, and I don't think it probably makes sense for the board to uh do a further analysis of seven different maps. Uh, so I hope by the end of tonight that there'll be three, two or three that are standout maps that uh you guys are wanting to proceed with. So the statistics for each of the map, uh I will have for you guys in addition to going over what the map looks like. And since uh all of the maps were submitted by people within twenty feet of me, uh I'm gonna give you guys a chance to uh just kind of give a little bit of the rationale of the map and the methodology. Uh, if you guys are prepared to do that, if not, we can kind of just look at it as it stands. Uh, so this is the existing map, uh had one majority-minority district. Uh, and as I mentioned, the uh, the total numbers were a little out of whack on that one. The first map, uh this was the one submitted by you, uh member Hasanadka. Uh, so this one had, the range was still high, but it somehow managed to add that four majority-minority districts, which is great, and I will pull that up here, and if you have something you want to say about it, or if you want me to zoom in or highlight anything.
I'll speak to highlights of my map.
Sure.
So the reason it somehow has four majority-minority districts is because that's what I'm going for. I'm trying to get as many as I could, you can't get seven, unfortunately. So the three things that this map brings is, one is the majority-minority district number. Number two is it uh disenfranchises the rule, so the Westbury County Neighborhood Association currently get three board members if they so chose. Uh, and historically, they've had, I think, more than that, if you go back twenty years. Uh, now this is only one. And then number three is there is a district centered around Wiley, which is that green district. So Wiley will get a person from their own district in this map. So then the other districts, I just kind of maneuvered a little bit to bring in uh more of the city population to get uh the majority-minority districts up, and in doing so, I made that red district real huge, and that uh uh in order to suck up the non-minority district portion. And then that yellow district is actually majority-minorities that are glued in on the left of that little corner in the upper left. Yeah.
Don, for board members that are manipulating a map on their computers, how do you get the street names, which box you leave in here, and I can't.
Uh, if it is not checked on there, uh if you go to this lower corner here where it says background map, uh if we're doing at the street names, you might have to zoom in a little bit closer to be able to see them a little bit more clearly, they're kind of grayed out behind the bulk of the information, which is the colored information. Okay, uh, did you find it, if you can, I can come over and help you if it's not, it's this one, it's this one right here. And you might have to click the arrow to bring up the overlays.
I got it.
Yeah, one of the downsides of this dates redistricting is the numbers don't actually match our actual subject district numbers. Yeah, so that was real hard to follow, but.
Wonderful, yeah. I'm looking, not talking, my district.
So I mean, each district also has a kind of the summary of the proportionality, uh compactness, uh minority distribution, and uh the splitting, which should, I, uh, the splitting should be zero for all of them. Uh, and I think I mentioned in the email I sent, a few of your districts uh had some very small, zero population uh census blocks that were in the wrong thing and were uh causing them to come up as split districts. And I took for liberty of fixing those for you, I hope that's okay. Uh, so the one downside of this one, I will point out before we move on, is the uh split between sub-districts is still relatively high. Uh, and there might be some issue uh from uh when we go to submit this to the county uh for the, for voter rolls. So I'll move on to map number two. Uh, and this was uh from member Agoski. Uh, this one, the range eighty-three, uh the, it was one majority-minority district. And I will switch over to this map. And if you have anything that you'd like to highlight or say about how you.
Yeah, 'cause I, I'm, I think I tinkered at the end, so I had three. So if you go back to the minor, majority-minority districts, I think I must sit right at fifty-fifty on two of them. Um, 'cause that was one of the criteria that I and I don't remember numbers. Okay, so I wasn't quite as successful. Um, but we're blocks away if this is something that's, um, you know, if this map makes it. Um, so the criteria I used, I tried to get the districts as equal as possible in size, um while also getting two more ma- majority-minority districts, which I slightly failed on. Um, and also minimally manipulating the old districts, so they still somewhat look similar, which was a criteria we said we don't care a whole lot about, but that was just my, uh it, it became difficult to continue to manipulate the map at some point, so um I focused on equality of the population sizes.
Okay, and the next one uh is from uh President Plasky, uh he had a couple of different.
I was having too much fun with the tool, I'm sorry.
Um, it is easy to get sucked in and spend four or five dollars.
I'll try to make this to speed this up, so the, the first map was basically my attempt to change as little as possible and, and get within uh some level of tolerance for, for population balance. So uh, uh, this map should look, you know, fairly similar to the existing map while also retaining better balance, that's, that's all this map was.
And this is the uh attendance area based.
So this, okay. This is the second map?
Yeah, this is the attendance area based, I think.
Yeah, so um, so the biggest complaint I've ever gotten, nor the only complaint I've ever gotten really with regards to how we draw our boundaries was from the Wiley neighborhood, saying that they felt like they were divvied up and they didn't really have anybody who was part of their school, so I just made sure that um, that that area uh was, was in one sub-district, and then kind of went from there. Trying to retain balance, and again, this isn't terribly changed from, from existing map. And the third, this last one was my attempt to do something that wasn't gerrymandered, but I, looking at the compactness and, and the actual algorithmic numbers that you showed at the beginning, it, it, it failed, so. Uh, it, it, I, it looks, it looks, you know, fairly square, but the, the, I think the, the, the green and the purple ones aren't quite as, as compact as I thought they were.
Yeah, and if this was, and I believe it was using the measure that's the smallest circle that's inscribed, the area of the district divided by the smallest circle that would inscribe the entire district, which I think, as we discussed the last time, uh really penalizes districts that have uh that are longer and narrower, even though our entire district is kind of long and narrow, so even though uh it's possible to you can fit seven hexagons or circles inside a circle, uh but our district isn't a circle to start with, so at some point, we're going to have some longer district, districts. So uh, yes, it's very difficult to get everything perfectly uh compact.
I appreciate that the administration went and did some algorithmically drawn ones, so.
Yeah, so I'll move on to the next two ones we did within the district. Uh, so the first one and this both use a similar methodology, which was starting from a starting point and then kind of perturbating around the boundaries of all the districts and finding all of the districts that had the biggest uh, the biggest difference of swapping individual blocks at the district boundaries to more uh proportionalize the uh minority distribution within the sub-districts. So the first one started with the existing map, uh and so per, and it perturbed kind of around everything until everything was a was contiguous, and then it was also uh within the one hundred, I think was what we said for the uh total range of high and low districts. So the first one, which I'll have to scroll over a little bit for, uh started from the existing district map and ended up with two majority-minority districts, again, as Brian pointed out, it's very easy to get things close, uh but getting them kind of over that last hurdle uh is hard, and then if something changes anywhere else, it kind of upsets the apple cart everywhere. Uh, so this district should look somewhat similar to the existing district model. Uh, it ends up with one more majority-minority district, and then the numbers are relatively balanced out. It does uh try to incorporate uh as many districts as possible in the university zone, uh and the compactness is still at the uh normal number. Uh, the second one, instead of that, used a little bit more complicated system where we pulled the uh where we pulled the entire block data for all of the blocks, the census data, and did an optimization of what would make each district, each sub-district uh have the best possible uh distribution of races to most uh accurately represent the population district and the district as a whole. So to give each race in the district a uh as perfect as possible uh representation in the board districting process, and when you do that, you get a map that looks something like this. Uh, which is great, uh it is uh very balanced and very reflects uh our minority population, but it is not meet the goals for compactness uh or continuity. So uh for this one, we started uh finding, you find some clusters where you can kind of build the state of uh a few sub-districts, so there's some there's a lot of purple here and a lot of yellow there, and once you have your seven clusters, then you start that same process where you iterate around the uh edges of each district and swapping them. Uh, this time, not just looking at the proportion of the districts that you're going around the uh edges, but also looking at uh trying to get some sort of continuity here to kind of line up, uh so balancing those two factors. Uh, doing that, uh you end up with this map that looks much less like the current districts, uh but is based on that racer, racial distribution, uh and I will pull up the information for that. Uh, but it was a very close, because it started very close, it ended up very close on the uh distribution of districts. Still had three majority-minority districts. Uh, the compactness was a little bit less because there were a few longer districts. We still had those kind of long horizontal districts going across, but now there's also a couple uh longer vertical districts going up and down. So uh this is kind of sacrificing compactness uh for the uh keeping a better minority balance in the district. It does still balance the university zone across four districts, which is about the most you can do uh while still having any sort of continuity that's not just districts running in large horizontal lines across the district. Uh while still having any sort of continuity that's not just districts running in large horizontal lines across the district. So that said, I would uh like to, uh if you'd like to take over for a board discussion. Uh I think this would be the time where that would make sense and I'll continue to drive if you guys will allow me.
This is great work, John, thank you so much for this this thorough analysis of the submitted maps and the algorithm presentation as well, that's really useful. Uh board members, uh and now it's our time to discuss.
That last one you had up, that was number seven, right?
Yes.
So I think uh our task tonight is to is to uh, you know, whittle this down to, I think, at most three. For to 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 let the public uh have an opportunity to to give us feedback on. And potentially, you know, take 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 a little thing back to um. Oh, RPC, thank you. Um. I'm a I'm a fan of number seven myself, but.
Yeah, I was gonna say you can actually scratch mine cuz seven does a better job of what I was trying to do and. I would throw mine out personally. Um and seven is my favorite as well in terms of the, uh he uses the same criteria I was trying to do, just way better.
Can you show seven?
Yeah, absolutely. The one other thing, and as I was talking about this in our administrative team meeting earlier, uh. I think I want to warn you guys, I did not have a lot of. Uh really informa- any any information about uh current board districts or member addresses, so it was very hands-off on the kind of. The uh political side, and so if there are things that are probably going to be affecting. How the board districts are laid out moving forward, uh I think you had said explicitly in the past that that wasn't a consideration we needed to consider, but. There may be some things in there, and again, I don't know what they are, but there may be some things where it affects uh things moving forward.
I would think that it would be good to see for between now and when we decide is. The overlay of the school districts for elementary on top of whatever these top three maps are. Cuz like the only thing I know looking at this map zoomed out is where Filo Road is. Cuz it's at that that angle, bro.
Yeah. And I can zoom in a little. Yeah. I thought did we have a what? This no, that's counting.
I really like the first map, Robbie, I think I think the the goals you had in mind were great and you uh and you achieved a lot of them, you I I do worry that 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 they're too disparate. Um for, I don't know, uh. That that's a big part of why I like this is is that it 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 meets some. And it's also it was designed by a computer, which kind of takes any. Concerns the public might have about personal bias when a bunch of people drawing it out out of the of the equation as well.
Man, I think it would still be worth including if we're allowed to potentially have more than one, I think. Both the last one and the and the first one had the most majority minority districts, so those would be the two two that I wouldn't consider. I don't have a third yet, um cuz I'm also interested, I feel like, John, you had mentioned like. When, like, there's another layer of it, when they go to RPC, like, kind of how they're created.
Yeah.
Just what how, cuz there is that really giant section in number seven. And so I'm just kind of curious, like, population density and some of those other things that. Come after we get it evaluated by RPC.
The the giant section is the red section.
Yeah.
Is the that is the lower population density, so similar, I think, to uh. Member Hassan Akka's, uh that is where it kind of makes it possible to. Uh have multiple maj- majority minority districts.
With Robbie's map, uh and maybe you remember, you used to do it a long time ago, I know, is it, are we able, do you think it's possible to retain? And swap enough population that we could also sort of get that within tolerance? Cuz it is very clearly a different idea uh on the same theme. And if that's our if that's our most important criteria, which several people seem to be advocating for, it is for me. I would love to have options that achieve that while also trying to achieve the goals, and if there's a way to do that, I can't see. Where the pockets are of de- of dense population that you could move around. Um where can we see the street level data from this far away? I can barely see it at all, but.
And but as you look at those later, you can zoom in and once you get in there a little further. I also find, I thought there was a way to overlay the school districts on top of that, but I'm not seeing it in the layers right now. I think it's another layer I have to import, but I can do that uh after the meeting. And uh update with that on our uh districting website and send that to you as well.
I mean, I hate to add another map to the equation, but I mean, can we take map one as input to the algorithmic process that swaps blocks to get it within tolerance?
Uh we can look at that, so what I found, and that's why I pulled up this chart here, which is a little bit small, let me see if I can zoom in a little. Uh is that uh. When the districts are really close, so this one with the four districts is fifty-one forty-nine, fifty-one forty-eight. Uh fifty-one forty-eight, and then it has one sixty-five thirty-five, so in the rest, the districts are. Uh in rest, that district six is directly uh adjacent to district seven, one and. Five, which we can go look at, uh when it's not really possible to do enough swapping, and the more swapping you do. You usually have to go through some area to get to the area where you need to be coming from. And going through the area takes you kind of the opposite of the way you want to go before you're able to come back out of it. And then by the time you're coming back out of it, it gets further disparate the other way. But that is something that we can do, uh and I can share, if we wanna have a couple that we wanna send to RPC now and reserve judgment on. Uh another one.
I was gonna say what you said a moment ago, that district six is not next to.
Oh, yeah, let me, let's see, so if district six is adjacent to districts. Seven, five, and one, so let's go look real quick.
Yes.
It is close to seven.
Six, seven. And then five's over here, and then one is here, so it's possible that with some. Uh moving between those, uh but the one that we would actually have to change is district one would have to lose. A lot, it looks like, uh and district seven would also have to lose a lot, so. It it's possible, uh I can take a look at it uh with your permission, uh Robbie, and get back to you guys. I I don't mess with people's stuff unless they let me know it's okay. Uh I will add one more thing on the map number seven, so that was based on. Uh racial distribution in the districts, so if you look at that one, it not only has four or three majority minority districts. But it also has uh districts that we're kind of looking at trying to get as close to a plurality. Of certain representative minorities uh in the district, again, as we discussed last time, I think I said we should have. Two point four African-American members and one point three Hispanic members. So that one did end up with a lot greater proportion of voting power. Uh in certain districts for those specific races, uh so Asian, uh black. And then the Hispanic one was a little bit harder because the. Our locations where those uh larger blocks were, were kind of spread more around the district and it was. Uh they didn't end up kind of congealing uh on the map as much as the other ones. Uh I did run one other map uh through the same algorithmic process that was instead of basing it basing it on race to start. Uh was basing it just on general minority to start, and uh that one, as it went through the process, ended up being. Uh I think it was counter to what the board's desire were for the end result of this. Uh where it had several very predominantly minority districts, uh and then like a lot of the middle lines and then several. Very predominantly white ones, and it seemed to be uh more segregated the uh voting power of. Our constituents instead of uh empowering them.
And Tori, do you guys have any any comments on this? So. Okay, um. I'm more into for mine as well, I I I think that the the computer did a better job than I did, by and large, um. I don't I don't think the board's interested in 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 a minimal amount of change, so that's kind of is just there for. Curiosity's sake more than anything else, um the the only reason I'm holding on to that map number four is because of that Wiley area, but Robbie did that in his. As well, I think if we can get his with better balance to compete with seven, that I think that those are the two best maps we have. But that's my personal thing, I don't like to care for everybody else.
I agree, um I actually have students in my district that attend Wiley, I have students in sub-district one that attend all. Over there in elementary schools, all of them, some of them live right across the street from each other and they attend two different schools, so. Kind of different how that was laid out, but.
Okay, um so we need to come up with good consensus in terms of like maps to go on to further analysis, so uh seven and amended one.
So we can take three though?
We can, I I threw three out there, it's just the board's just this decision.
No, no, I mean, I mean, it's what uh we made of RPC or whatever.
I think they, I think what they said to us in the meeting was two or three, but I think they're also incurring some cost for that additional.
Yeah, oh yeah, we can do three, definitely.
When do those go to our, like, how soon do they want them?
At the RPC or at the clerk's office?
RPC.
Um they're ready whenever we're.
And how long does that differ?
Um her turnaround time is pretty quick, I think she got them to us in about a week or a few days.
And then they do it to the clerk.
Um five months, so we would need to have something, they've already started calling asking us one for them, um so they know we're discussing them. So I think our goal was May cuz they need at least five, cuz they have to post and.
Yep.
Okay, and uh I think in order to expedite the process, with your guys' permission. Uh and since we have uh enough time for public comment and we don't have another board meeting till April. Uh I think as soon as we get that back, if it's okay with you, we could post those uh kind of. Fully legalized maps directly to the same redistricting website, so uh if there's any public comment that we could just jump right back into discussing that on the fourth.
Would 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 the board be amenable to, say, you know, Robbie working with John, to uh to get that uh range down on map number one and submit that with. With with map number seven and just have those two maps going?
Would that be something we also be looking at before going in, or are we just leaving those pieces?
Well, we can share, yeah, I was gonna say, we can share whatever we get from RPC via email, for sure.
Sound good?
Yep. Yeah, it's fun, so um timeline-wise, in turn, how long are we saying we would like to keep them up? Are we saying uh our next meeting is April fifth, but we have spring break in there, so. We wanna go beyond that or?
When does when does the counting need be?
On May.
Okay, so let's let's say we'll we'll look at we'll look at uh what RPC does on. Quickly on the first meeting in April and we'll be prepared to vote it on the second meeting in April. Sound good? Great, and we could plan, thanks, everybody. Uh moving on to our consent agenda, we have the minutes for the February fifteenth business meeting, the February sixteenth parent teacher advisor committee meeting, the February twenty-fourth district facilities property committee meeting. And the March first uh study session, uh we have advance approval uh for the February bills for payment. That were in our packet, uh a list of our personal items and a list of administrative personal items as well to be approved. Uh interfund loans uh from Abanidol Ed to working cash fund for the amount of two hundred forty thousand dollars. We have the press plus that we talked about uh last meeting, that giant amount of changes to our policies. And uh payment to Abanidol Education, uh we're requesting a thirty-two thousand and five hundred dollar payment to Abanidol Education. Uh for the uh in June, the school had transferred the parking lot at three one North Way Street to the city of Abana for sixty-five thousand dollars, and. Half of that is due back to Abanidol Ed. Uh is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So, second.
Is there any discussion on any of the items uh in the consent agenda? Hearing none, a roll call vote, please.
Member Hassan Akka?
Yes.
Member Hall, yes, member Orr? Yes, member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes, vice president Exum?
Yes.
And president Plasky?
Yes, uh twelve point one gifts, uh following donated a total of three hundred dollars to Abanidol Ed in the memory of. Their longtime volunteer Bill Curry, Kathy Menetees, John Marilyn Mitchfield, John Prince, Patricia Watts. Luther Johnston and Alice Elder Miller. Jeffrey Ungred donated four hundred dollars to the Vanna High School Boys Tennis Program. Kent Fulmer donated three hundred dollars to Abana High School Boys Basketball Program, is there a motion to accept these gifts?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh the renewal of the upper food contract for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, Carol, any comments?
Um I had a memo in the packets that basically explained my reasons why I'm recommending we renew, um obviously, we've seen from some of our other contracts that we did bid out during. The pandemic, how that's gone, and it's a tough time for people to be hiring people, so. Um there is a six percent increase that's allowed for CPI, because CPI is a bit higher this year. So they will be allowed to have a six percent increase, but we're recommending due to the reasons in the memo. Um that we give them one more year and it's a one-year renewal, so it's just something that will come back next year for reconsideration again.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Hassan Akka? Number Hall, yes, member Orr? Yes, member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes, vice president Exum?
Yes.
And president Plasky?
Yes, um I doubt there will be a motion, but does is there an emotion to approve the equity of a contract? Hearing none, it goes without a motion, uh twelve dot four, the resolution authorizing the directing of sale or disposal of personal property. Carol, any comments on on this? Yeah, no more no more disclosure stuff.
Yeah, we can see it's sewing machines and iMac.
Alright, thanks, is there a motion? Sir, second.
Second.
Uh roll call, please.
Member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Orr? Yes, member Hall?
Yes.
Member Hassan Akka?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes, vice president Exum?
Yes.
And president Plasky?
Yes, uh unfortunately, this is the time of year where we have to inform staff member that usually based on uh on voting for grant approval, we we were uh. Temporarily um. Putting out uh. We're 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 the production for notice, is it, we have every intention of hiring these individuals back, but um. Since required by law, we have to in March, so. Um the first one is adoption of resolution authorizing for uh non implement a full-time, non-tended. Teacher not in the last year of probationary service. Is there a motion?
This is not someone who can talk today.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And and not all of us are are going to be recalled back, so some of our positions are COVID positions and we will not need all of those. Hopefully, we will not need all of those positions, they were hired with one new contract, so I didn't want to interrupt you.
Ms Franklin, how many people does this affect?
One, this is one.
This is just one, okay.
Sorry.
I'll I'll move for this person.
But the first one is a non-renewal.
Yeah, please. Wait, do we need?
No. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Agalski?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Hassan Akka?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes, vice president Exum?
Yes.
And president Plasky?
Yes, adoption.
Yes, adoption or resolution authorizing honorable dismissal of full-time educational support personnel. This affects uh two individuals.
Someone? Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Hassan Akka?
Yes.
Member Hall, yes. Member Orr, yes. Member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pelosi.
Yes, twelve dot seven, adoption of resolution authorizing honorable dismissal of full-time grant-funded educational support personnel union. That's one person.
Someone?
Roll call, please.
Member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Orr, yes. Member Hall, yes. Member Hassan Akka?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pelosi.
Yes, uh twelve dot eight, adoption of resolution authorizing honorable dismissal of full-time grant-funded educational support personnel union. This affects twelve individuals.
Someone?
Second. Roll call, please.
Member Hassan Akka?
Who was?
Member Hall, yes. Member Orr, yes. Member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Pelosi.
Yes, uh twelve dot nine, adoption of resolution authorizing honorable dismissal of part-time grant-funded education support personnel. This affects fourteen people.
Someone, second.
Roll call, please.
Member Hassan Akka?
Who was?
Member Hall, yes. Member Orr, yes. Member Avalski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Pelosi.
Yes, uh there is a call for a future special executive session uh on Friday, uh March eleventh at six P M. Uh superintendent support.
Right. Alright, so um as most people here hopefully are aware, um our S R O agreement will be ending um in the in in June. So I have started engaging conversations with some of our stakeholders, um working with our student ambassadors. We have a few um activities planned. Our first one is happening tomorrow during parent teacher conferences. So Mr. Nance and I, um, a couple of other administrators, we've invited Officer Burnett uh to join us. So this is uh primarily for the high school. I will be in twenty-one ninety-nine, um just collecting feedback, thoughts, questions um from the U H S community. So this will be our first um engagement opportunity, um Q and A. So I'll be doing others. Um, I'm also having some one-on-one meetings with people in the community. Mr. Nance and I are um just um sharing the the success of the program, um talking about some of the data pieces that were really important to some of our members of the community um the last time we had the agreement before the board. Um, so we're just having some preliminary early conversations to get some feedback. So this is our first um opportunity, our first Q and A. Dual language forum. So this is uh something that happens every year. Um, Ms. Riconi uh leads these. This is the time of the year for families um that might be listening, people interested in dual language um to come out and learn more about the program. So the Spanish parent forum will be March twenty-third. The French parent forum is March thirtieth. Um, we've had a lot of success engaging parents via Zoom, so we're going to keep that format going um and invite uh parents to learn more about those programs on both of those nights. Uh, Ms. Riconi is going to make sure that parents are aware um that there is a committee that's meeting um that there potentially could be some changes in the elementary um dual language program. So they are aware of that as they, when they come to the forum. Uh, we won't know what those changes will be, um but we will make sure that parents are aware of that. And they're not signing up this night. This really is just their info night to get more info and get their questions answered. Um, free tax help, um whoops, sorry. This was shared um with us and we've been um putting this information out because it will um positively benefit some of our families. Um, so the township has some great programs and this is one that they are um promoting in the county and we are sharing this information. We've shared it on social media. We've shared it with families. Um, so um check your email, check your, check our Facebook if you need help with your taxes for free. Um, and there may be some money coming back to you for the child tax credit and earned income tax credit. So um there's a link here. Uh, Catherine will have this in the board update tomorrow. Um, so families can follow that link to get more information from Cunningham Township on how they can get free tax help. Um, also, a free reduced computer pop-up shop um is is uh being shared in the community. Even though this is happening at Champagne Public Library, we don't want our Bana families to feel that they are not uh welcome at this event. This is for any family um that qualifies for free and reduced. Um, you can go. I believe you can get a desktop computer for zero pricing for free and a laptop for, what is it, twenty dollars? I can't read the form. So um there is some pre-registration required and we have also been promoting this as well with our families. The Leo mural is off and going. A lot of good work here happening with the Urbana Public Arts Program and the Center for Latin American and Caribbean Studies. Um, this, this is involving a lot of uh student input there. Um, the theme of the art project, the mural is enacting hope and togetherness. So these are some early photos. Um, they started in February and the goal is to be completed um at the end of this month. Um, I can't remember the name of the lead artist, but I think he's in the picture there. Um, and they've been having workshops. Um, I know Principal Choa has been really excited about this and she's been kind of keeping us looped in with photos. So we wanted to um give a shout out to the students for their hard work and we'll make sure when the mural is completed that we um celebrate it um as it is going to be mounted in the main school hallway just by the office entrance. We have a couple of upcoming art shows. Um, our art team at U H S is phenomenal and they are going to be exhibiting art in the Central Regional Art Exhibit coming uh later in March. Uh, one of our students, Cassandra Todd, she's a former King kid, so yay Cassandra. Um, was selected to show her work at the Bridgeport Art Center in Chicago as part of the senior scholarship ex- exhibition. So the gallery opens on March fifth. Also, U H S students will represent the district in the annual Eric Show at the Illini Union Gallery. So if you have not gone by and seen some of our artists in residence from U H S, I'd encourage you um to stop by. The show is open now through April second. Starting tomorrow, actually. Uh, last week, the uh U H S um uh school held a, um I guess it was kind of their Black History Month program slash um talent showcase. So there were students who presented poetry, songs, um some rhetorical renditions. Uh, it was a great opportunity um for them to just showcase their authenticity and just be their true selves and and share um some of their passion around Black History Month. That was livestreamed and so if you're, hopefully everybody here has subscribed to our YouTube channel. Um, and if you haven't, please do that and you can view the livestream there. And um cap and gown. So we are really trying to engage our seniors. So they've been sending out a lot of announcements. So to our public and any parents and seniors who might be watching, um you need to go in. It is time to order your cap and gown. So I know uh it will be here before we know it. Um, and so if your gown just doesn't magically arrive to you, you have to go in and actually go to the website and put in an order. So we make sure we have a gown there that is um that will fit you and be personally selected just for you for the graduation ceremony on May twenty-six. And uh we have no FOIAs.
Board reports before I get to mine.
We had a.
Uh, we had a very good Illini Division dinner held at the high school. Uh, we were small but mighty and the speaker was very good. He was from Richland School District, I believe. And he talked a lot about finances and it was a great learning experience. I was glad we were able to show off our school. A lot of people were very impressed with the cafeteria and how we had spent our money and um the meal was very good. So I was glad we were able to do that to show off our district.
For the first time in person.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so I have one thing I want to talk about board reports and that is uh coming up with a schedule to do our superintendent evaluation. I want to apologize to the public board for not getting our midterm check done. Uh, the board has traditionally not been very good about doing evaluations in its history on a regular schedule. And I want to try to rectify that going forward. So to that end, uh we need to talk about uh timing the process to do the the overall uh yearly superintendent evaluation. I'd like to get this on a cadence so that it occurs in April every year, uh so that it's always done uh before the board turns over in May. So uh it'd be, it'd be great. I mean, Anne, I know you've kind of done this, this, this uh, this rubric for the past couple of years. If you take on, I guess, the beginning of trying to collect uh feedback from direct reports, et cetera, that we've done in the past.
Sure. Um, and I, I mean, cut yourself a real slack. I mean, we may not have been great at doing it in the past, but we are slowly ooching it further and further back in the calendar. Because when Peggy and I did it before the new board members received it, it was back in like October of however many years ago. So now we're just, you know, it's.
We're getting there.
We're getting there. Um, I'd be happy to get that started. I would love it if there was one other um board member volunteer who would like to help me and shadow me. Um, trying not to put the weight on new board member shoulders, but it's a, it's not a, it's not terribly time consuming. It's just um making sure that you got your ducks in a row and you're, you know, good with Microsoft Word and or PDFs or whatever to organize the data. But um it's something that would be great that we just have a rolling, at least two board members to work on so that when new board members come in and go out again, you know, somebody always knows the process. So um but also one other thing, I'm sorry, I'm still in your thunder here, Paul, but that one other thing about this superintendent evaluation process is that when Peggy and I overhauled the questionnaire that we did, however many years ago it was, it was with the view of that we would constantly be improving it. And we want to keep learning from not just, not the evaluation of the person, but the process itself to keep honing it, making it better and better. So again, that's another reason why it would be great to have a new newer board member come on who has fresh ideas and fresh questions that can be added to the.
I'm not a newer board member, but I definitely have a lot of H R experience.
You do.
I definitely would.
If you want to do it, but Tori. You do so much that I didn't want to volunteer you, but I would love it if you'd want to help. That would be awesome. So.
That's the board. Does anyone else wish to volunteer?
No, I think it's great. I just wanted to chime in that um when Anne and Peggy had done this in the past, it was actually approved by our homeowners association and school boards. They were very impressed with the form that they, and how they had changed it. So we did have official approval, if you want to say, to move forward with this. So.
And we do, that's one of the things that we wanted to do is to run it past our division directors because uh the ISB has got all the tools already there. So we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. Um, we wanted to make sure that we cross all our Ts, dot our Is, had attorneys look at it to make sure, you know, we didn't miss anything out. Um, just to keep it above board and every, you know.
So how much time do you typically need, I guess, to get this done?
Um, well, if, we definitely want to get direct reports responses back before the school year ends, obviously, and everybody's off doing their own thing. And that, um, so I would say probably about from start to finish, two months. I mean, the the less time, the better because we don't want to.
So it was like, we're going to have to target a a May evaluation this time around, let's start earlier next year.
Yeah, and I mean, I I know all the seven of us are good for it. We're still here over the summer for most part. Yes, um, so it's just getting the the direct reports and administration, you know, in central office.
I don't want to keep us here any later. So we'll let you two kind of get started on the process and and we can target uh an evaluation actually happening in May this year.
That'd be awesome.
Then at that point in time, we can talk about how to uh have a set calendar for this, uh set a year in advance so that we can have defined dates for these things.
Great.
Alright, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Someone?
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody. I tried to get done by ten.